Well, good evening and welcome to the Village of Riverside, Illinois Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing of Wednesday, May 27. My name is Paul Cuchara. I am the chairperson of the committee and it's a pleasure for me to welcome you all to this proceeding. Sonya, may I ask you to please call the roll?
All righty. Chairman Cuchara?
Present.
Commissioner Gary?
Present.
Commissioner Lesniak?
Here.
Commissioner Mateo?
Here.
All righty, actually I should mention that Commissioner Mateo is out of town for work, so she is joining us via conference call. Jill, could you just state your name really quick?
Bernie Mateo.
Does everybody here recognize her voice?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we will count her as here. Next up will be Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
And Commissioner Randall?
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you, Sonya. So, we are, excuse me, we are here this evening to consider application PZ-15-001 concerning the property at 241 Gage Road in Riverside, and it concerns the height of an accessory building and a request for a variation to our ordinance. Just as a reminder to those present, those watching, we are, this board is advisory to the Village Board of Trustees, and so that body will make the final determination with respect to this matter. So what we are doing here this evening is making a recommendation to the Village Board. So with that, let me-
First you have to open the public hearing.
I opened the public hearing. I thought I did it already, but happy to hit the hammer twice. So it's a pleasure to open the public hearing. At this point, with regard to the formal announcement, this was printed in the May 6th version of the landmark. I'm happy to read the salient points of it. The full text will be in the transcript of the hearing. Notice is hereby given to all interested park persons that a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Village of Riverside will be held on Wednesday, May 27, 2015, at 7:00 PM to consider an application from petitioner Larry Svetzka for a variation from the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance for property located at 241 Gage Road, Riverside, Illinois, in the R1A Single Family Residence District in order to construct a new detached garage. A variation from Section 10-7-3.A.A.A. of the Riverside zoning ordinance, which requires that the maximum height of an accessory structure in a residential district shall not exceed 16 feet in height as measured to the peak of the roof. Approval for a variation for up to four feet is requested by the petitioner. And again, the full text will be, that was printed in the landmark, is attached for the convenience of commissioners in your packet and will be included in the full transcript. Pursuant to the ordinance, neighbors within the prescribed radius of the property have been notified, and a map of that radius and of these residents is also in the packet and will be part of the official record of the hearing. Sign was also posted pursuant to the ordinance, and a map of the property within the town is also included for convenience and for the record. Further, the governing ordinance is in our packet this evening. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Svetzka to make his opening remarks and please help us understand what you're trying to do. Thanks.
My name's Larry Svetzka. I live at 241 Gage. It's a Dutch colonial two-story home. I'd like to build a new garage that would accommodate my storing an antique vehicle on a lift. That's the reason for a height variance on the construction. The plan for the garage, the peak would be 19 feet, which is three feet taller than the structure that is there now. There was a question raised, could we lower the peak and still accommodate the car? I asked the architect. He wasn't 100% sure. It's going to depend on the height of the cars being stored underneath the vehicle, too. My other two vehicles are a minivan and an SUV. So those are tall vehicles, so we need to allow enough height that, and the car that I'm storing is a 1964 Cadillac. It's a very long car. It's 18 and 1/2 feet long. So I need enough clearance there that it's not hitting the roof. Also, with the pitch, the way that it is, it will allow for better heat to rise out of the garage. And we don't want to bake the car. I have original material in there for the interior. The car's been in a parade a few times on July 4th, but also contribute to drying out the wiring and things like that, so it's, if we can leave it at 19 feet, we'd like to leave it at 19 feet. If you have any questions-
The drawings indicate 19 feet, 10 inches.
Oh, is it 10 inches?
Yeah, it was closer to 20, I believe.
All right.
And I think, I think the statement of the petition, in fact, reads up to-
Up to four feet.
20, 20 feet.
Just to be on the safe side.
Right, all right. Exact, right. Okay.
So I'm asking the board for a zoning variation.
Okay.
Based upon the drawings that were shown.
Okay. Any other, any other comments you'd like to offer?
You know, the house is taller than the garage. I don't think it looks out of place. And I talked to neighbors on both the east and west side, and they seem to be in favor of it. And the neighbor south of it said it looks nice, and, you know, it's better than what's there now. Don't want to go three wide. I don't, there's, I wouldn't have the yard left, really. It's really the only way I can store the vehicle in the garage.
Okay. Great, thanks very kindly. Appreciate it. Sonya, the village staff has prepared some comments. Can you please take us through those?
Sure. As the petitioner stated, he is requesting a four-foot variation from the required maximum 16-foot height for accessory buildings in residential districts. He is proposing to build a 19-foot, 10-inch-tall detached two-car garage in the same location as the existing garage. The additional height requested will accommodate a car lift that will bring that peak up to 19 feet, 10 inches. The proposed, what should we call it, pitch to the roof does not match the existing house. It's a little bit steeper than that, so the qualifier in the code that I attached a copy of does say that it could go up to 18 feet if they were matching the house's pitch, but they are not. It's actually a steeper roof than what the pit, no, than what the house is. So just a little bit of clarification on that. We did do the impervious surface and building coverage calculations, and the proposed garage will bring them to their 50% impervious surface coverage, and will bring them up to 27% for building coverage. So this really is about the largest-sized garage they could do and still meet the impervious surface restrictions for our residential districts. If the variation is approved, the petitioner could then apply for their demolition permit for the existing garage and the building permit for the proposed garage.
Sonya, can you please repeat, because it wasn't in my version of the notes, and perhaps you revised it since I read it first. Your comments with respect to the pitch of the roof and being able to go up to 18 feet-
Right.
Can you please clarify that?
Yeah, in the code, it makes an allowance that in the R1AA and the R1A districts where a detached garage, not to exceed 18 feet in height as measured to the peak of the roof may be permitted to enable the roof pitch of the garage to match the roof pitch of the existing home. So that allows for a slightly taller roof for a garage if they're trying to match, match the house. In this case, the roof pitch proposed for the garage is a steeper pitch. I believe it is a 812 pitch? No?
The home is a Dutch colonial, so it's got two pitches on the roof.
It's a gambol roof.
It's a gambol roof, yeah.
So, right. I believe the 812, I believe the pitch that my building inspector quoted to me was a 612 pitch, I believe, on the existing house for the one. No? You don't think so?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Not on a gambol roof, that front one has got to be pushing 16, 18, and 12, and then tapers off and comes across and comes back down.
Unless he's using some sort of an average.
He might be using the average, as opposed to the peak.
Show additional, additional.
Yeah, we've got the picture of the market.
There's a glimpse of it from the side, a little bit of the side.
The wings on there, the wings are steeper than the roof.
Right, right.
Right.
It's a typical gambol roof where it comes up and does this, so.
No. The roof is straight there. There's wings on the side.
But that's, I think most people consider the wings on the side that you're talking about, that's the gambol effect. It comes up this way and then it comes over that way. And for your dormer, it's the top portion that comes out and is extended out to the face of the building.
Yes.
So, but what you call the wings is really a second roof or considered a part of-
Those are technically a dormer off the gambol.
Okay. Oh, you can't hear?
I can't hear what you're saying.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, technically, those dormers, they're dormers off the gambol roof. The main roof shape is a gambol roof, and then the top portion of that gambol roof is extended out over the dormers, so.
You know, and I apologize for asking my clarifying question. I suppose I should have postponed that to our discussion period. I didn't want to get us together, but in any event, if there are no, if there are no further comments by Mr. Svetzka, then I'd like to open it up to any public comment. Are there any folks here present who would like to speak with respect to this proposed Please, if you could come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please, please picture-
He does live next door to him, and he's a great person to live next door to when he's been everything he could have to take care of us in the house, and we're so old. And we'd like him to have whatever he needs to stay.
All right, could you actually give us your name and your address just for the record?
This is Erin Stoeck.
Could you please spell your name for the benefit of the recorder, please?
S.T.O.E.N.D.O.E.R.T., 245 Gage.
Thank you. Thank you kindly.
Sorry, what was the address? Be, north or south?
245 East.
So, we, east.
240 East, right, 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 okay. Great, thank you again, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Okay, any other public comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can hear what the petitioner said, or what the commenter just said. Could you just summarize your comments, please?
The, Mr. Svetzka's neighbor to the east made some complimentary remarks with respect to the petitioner and asked that we favorably consider his petition.
So that he will not move.
That he's a very good neighbor, that they don't want him to move.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any final questions, closing comments, statements? Okay, then at this point, we can close the public hearing and open it up to discussion by the commissioners. So with that, I'll open it up. Anyone like to volunteer a perspective, comments?
I have a couple of questions and some observations also. In particular, concerning the height, you're asking for the 20 feet, but you're talking about a clearance on the drawing of 20 feet, and you're also talking about flooding occurring. So I presume you're going to raise the floor an additional foot, six inches, foot or something to avoid the flooding, and then put the 20 feet on top of that. So you're really talking 21 feet relative to the ground around, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, I-
Yeah, I don't think we determine how much the pitch ramp you raise, but yes, you're correct.
So you're raising the floor of the garage?
We have to raise the floor of the garage, because it right now floods. So we could probably bring that pitch down a foot without too much for us to have to adjust to make the 20 feet. We have to get some exact measurements on the heights of the vehicles being stored there. The darkest I thought was hot, like the closest white, but we're going to wait through it.
Another question I had concerned the shadow on the neighbor's lawn, but your neighbor's here and saying that's not a problem to him, so I'm, as far as I'm concerned, that's off the books. Because you did address the structures there, but you didn't address the total property, the land, in your application. So I'm happy with that. Do you know what the current height is? I mean, we're talking, everything that's in here is talking about the maximum. Is it right at the 16-foot maximum?
Right now, it's 16-foot peak, yes.
At, so it's at the maximum that is allowed? It is 16-foot? Okay. Those are my only questions. Shall I go into my comments, or my, the discussion of where I'm going to go, or do you, where do you want to go?
If you prefer to make those now, or if you prefer to wait while we go around, then-
All right, why don't you go around?
Okay, great.
Well, first of all, I think it's commendable that you're not trying to ask for a three-car garage and increase impervious surface, because everybody in the town seems to have issues with water, especially as you get closer to the river. That said, I do have reservations about the overall height over the entire structure and getting down, down to kind of the last item, which was item 7, about it being a minimum variation being requested. And I think there is an option in which, if you took the one bay and made that one bay higher and made the roof line of that portion commensurate with the existing house in that it's a gambol roof, and then bring the other bay down, I think that would be asking for the minimum requirement so that the whole garage isn't being kicked up the full 20 feet, but just the one bay or half the garage, so.
Two different profiles, is that what you're saying?
Yes, in effect. I can drive for you if you want. I'm an architect as well, and I've done numerous garages with car lifts in it, and they haven't, I haven't had to go quite that high to accommodate them, so. The travel height on most of those is 80 inches underneath, and then the car would sit on top of that, so. Anyway, those are kind of my comments.
Okay, great, thanks, man. Teresa?
I think going along the same lines, it seems that maybe more information would be good to have to know how, how much clearance you do need for that car lift. I feel like we don't have enough information to judge whether the variance that's being asked is the minimum, you know, and also the floor elevation and how it's going to vary from the existing.
Greg?
Dave?
Save the best for last, huh? So I have, so I have a couple of concerns, and part of it isn't even regarding the variation, but it is regarding the fact of raising the floor line, because in fact, you're actually making the flood, flooding even worse, because you're actually displacing water that would normally be, if you want to say, in your garage. So that water is being displaced, and you're really not taking care of that. I think one of my other concerns is exactly what Teresa said. I think it would be better to have a little bit more information. Again, I don't know what type of lift that you're looking at. However, some of the lifts that I did look at, there isn't really a need to go up that high. So I don't necessarily know. It would be good to see, you know, what you're going to do in terms of the fact of the lift, the cars that are going in it, what is the height requirement. But my other concern is actually what you're doing with, with the water, because you're displacing that amount of water from actually going into your garage, and not that I would say that's a good idea, but the fact is, is that you're making other areas worse, which could affect your neighbors. Let me just finish. Let me just, just finish. So it basically would make their, potentially, the runoff even worse. And then, secondly, my concern of just what's going to happen to the neighbors, I mean, I understand you've got a very nice neighbor, you take care of her, but, you know, when we put this zoning ordinance together and tried to figure out what would be the best, you know, our concern isn't what's immediate right now, but what would be in the future. And, you know, making a decision based on a neighbor that's here today and may move tomorrow wouldn't be necessarily, I think, the right decision for the Plan Commission to take that into consideration. So I'm more so, even the fact of the height, have concerns over what's happening with the water, and that would be one of the things that I think would need to be addressed if he wants to raise the actual floor level of the, of the garage.
Well, there would be a grading plan that would be required as part of this, because it is over the 400-square-foot threshold that we have in the building code. So if any additions or accessory structures that are 400 square feet or more do require the submittal of a proposed grading plan for the village engineer to review and approve. So that would be reviewed, at least the grading, you know, grading around that would be reviewed by the village engineer as part of the building permit process.
But, and again, it's all I'm asking, or all I'm saying is that, you know, with that becomes a little bit more work than just what's being shown here and asked, and I would like to make sure that it's all understood, what we're doing with it, versus to say, well, we can approve it, and then let's see what happens. And if nothing happens, I potentially just made, and I'm making this up, because I don't know all the properties and where the flooding occurs-
Right.
-but I could be adding more water to the neighbor behind me and making his potential area worse. So these are things that I think need to be, be looked at. I understand that the need or the request of wanting to have a three-car and one's an antique, but on the other hand, too, it's just a matter of, you know, what are you going to do with, with the height of the garage and then with the flooding of it? And I think neither of those are really very well detailed in here to say, this is how we plan to take care of that.
Yeah, I would agree. Along those same lines, you know, the water is an issue in this town, and a couple of the projects that we are working on, we are actually putting in cistern tanks to collect that water, so that we're not actually increasing. So when we're increasing the area of a project, you know, we're trying to accommodate that water runoff into some sort of a capture and release over time system, and they're really not that expensive. You know, we're talking about like a 600-gallon cistern tank, which runs, you know, roughly in the neighborhood of about $1,000 bucks installed, so.
Well, again, it's a matter of-
To address, I think there is a water issue.
You have to address everything instead of just passing a variance and then say, let's hope something happens.
Correct.
I think it needs to be one complete request that kind of details everything, like Teresa said, was to, you know, what is the lift that's being used? What do you really need? And then my concern would be also, you know, the water. I do like your idea, you know, there are other ways to address the architecture of it, and I agree with you 100%. So I think, you know, some of that needs to really be addressed before I would be able to really consider this.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Any other?
Do you want a motion on the table so we can now get into this?
We still, we still have-
Actually, I mean-
We have Jill.
I'd like to give Commissioner Mateo an opportunity to comment, please.
Sure, but first, if somebody comes to the microphone, summarize Dave and Teresa's comments. Let's see. Commissioner Pelletier said that she would like some more info. She said that, is this really the minimum? We don't really know what the requirements are to accommodate the cars, if this really is the minimum request that he could make, and then also needs to address the floor elevation issue and what the true height of the structure is going to be. Commissioner Lesniak said similarly that he need, feels that he needs more information and that specifically the flooding issue should be addressed and how they would accommodate additional runoff, since it would not be accommodated within the garage as it currently is. So he feels that those need to be addressed before he would be able to really vote on this particular request.
Thank you. I would only add to that, that whether to consider hardship and we need to start with chances, I'm not clear on what regards in this case, but perhaps that's a little successful if the motion is on the table.
Okay.
What?
I agree.
Yes.
We should just go through to see if he meets the variance hardships.
Okay.
Before we get to this, there were a couple other issues I had, if I may. I wanted to point out, number one, in your drawings, I don't think you can open the garage doors, because the columns are in the way, the lift columns are in the way, so there's some glitches and problems in your drawings that really need to be cleaned up. And in the, well, I guess this is a, I guess these other ones are pluses and minuses, so we need a motion on the table before I bring these others up.
So may I, do I hear a motion to approve?
Slow move.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second to approve the petition so that we may have further discussion and a vote on this?
Point of personal privilege, I think. I intend to vote against this, but I still think we need to get a discussion on the floor to at least let the Board of Trustees know where we are coming from, so I would highly, strongly suggest we, well-
Okay, so the other option would be-
I'll do it the opposite way. I make a motion that we reject this until we have further information that indicates how the lift will be, what type of lift and what is needed for the height, and also how the drainage will be taken into account.
Can you repeat that for me?
Yes, I will try the same way. I, I vote that we go against, or we do not recommend this until we have further information on the lift, the heights that are required for the cars, the drainage for the land, be it that, and I also would like to know what would be the extent of the, what I will call the, the floor level of the garage in relationship to the current level that's there right now. So that's my motion.
Would you accept an amendment to table the motion as opposed to turning it down?
Would we want a motion to continue pending further information?
We can do that. I guess we can do that with the same reasoning. A motion to continue with all of the same reasons, requesting all the same reasons.
Additional information.
Right.
Okay.
But I would also suggest, because Greg brought up a very good point, is that they look at the architecture of it and see what can be done, so the fact that, you know, there may be other alternatives, which I think is a good idea.
Second.
Okay, so-
You second?
Second, yeah.
So any other, what I would propose we do is, for the benefit of all parties involved, is review what is in the ordinance with respect to granting a variation, so that when, when the time does come to either give a, an up or down vote on it, that we have, that we're clear with respect to having met or not met the requirements under, under the ordinance. And for the benefit of those who receive packets, in the staff comments, pages two and three, you have those in front of you, and for the benefit of those who don't, let me just read them to you. According to the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission should render a decision based upon the following items: that the owner of the property in question will suffer undue hardship in the absence of such variation; number two, that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances; and number three, that the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. So that's what's in the ordinance. That's what binds us to our decision-making, and it makes it clear, a variation shall be recommended only if the evidence in the judgment of the Board of, in the Board, in the judgment of this body sustains each of the three conditions that I just enumerated. So that's the framework within which we have to work. I would entertain comments on the extent to which each of the commissioners believes this particular petition, based on what we know about it now, meets each of these three criterias.
Was the motion for a continuance?
Motion, sorry, there's-
Is that, is that a continuance to the meeting before we actually vote, or are we going to? to vote on the continuance?
Sonia, do you have a?
It's just a point I was trying to.
Yeah. Do you have a preference, or you want to handle that?
I think we can have discussion, but it should, I suppose, be relevant to the continuance. And perhaps you could put it in the context of, we can't really make these findings unless we have this additional information. So maybe if we put it in that context, it's relevant to the motion on the table. Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So would anyone like to start with thoughts on, on these, on these three items? Dennis?
If I may, this is the hard part of being a commissioner. I mean, we have these nice people that live in Riverside, and they want to do good things, nice things. I think I like this concept, I like what he's trying to do. But according to the rules, I mean, it's very clear to me that on all three cert, well, at least the first two for sure, and the third one, I think there is a judgment value. I just do not see how there's undue hardship, or that there are unique circumstances. I mean, in both cases, I think it very easily could be anybody else, and, you know, everybody along the street could be facing this. And as far as the, if granted, it will not alter the essential character of the locality, I think, I think the architect that you've got is not really giving you the best shot. I mean, he cut it off too quickly, because it looks rather barn-like. It looks very high, the walls compared to the roof. I, I think that an argument could be made, that architecturally speaking, you know, we're not supposed to make architectural judgments here, but that altering the, the, what is it, the essential character of the locality might be different. Now, your neighbors are saying something else, okay, that's a strong argument against that. But the two, the first two points, I think, are the two points that are, that are really essential. But if we do, if we do not grant the variance, some, or if the Board of Trustees doesn't grant the variance, I think somehow we should be working with this owner and trying to find a way to do this, because this is a very unique thing that gets one car out of view, and it helps to adapt to the world that Frederick La Holmes didn't see originally, that includes bicycles and automobiles. I think it's a great idea. I think it just needs a little bit of stretching, negotiating, I don't know what. But as far as this meeting is concerned, I think we as a commission have to turn this down. And maybe with some of the architectural treatments that he'll come with the, after the continuance, maybe something will show up there that'll look better somehow and make it feel different. And he won't need the variance.
Greg?
I would agree. I think the first two items are not clearly demonstrated. On the third point, I also agree that, you know, pending, pending how this gets addressed, it could actually be a good way to enhance the property itself and thereby enhance the neighborhood, and maybe not even require a variance, given that, you know, the existing house has got a gambol roof, and consequently, we can go up to about 18 feet as you state. So you're, you're within striking distance. If, if the gambol roof is done right, you might be able to handle it and not even require a variance. And I would highly recommend that you look at handling the water runoff, and, I mean, you're not really increasing the amount of surface area catching, collecting rainwater. However, you are going to raise it up to keep it from flooding, and that's going to push the water, you know, into your neighbor's yards. So.
I'm sorry.
Those are, those are.
Part of the problem with the runoff is when the neighbors on the west put their driveway in, and they raised the property. I wasn't, wouldn't have been concerned that night.
Okay.
Teresa?
I have nothing further to add. It's the, the first two points, I think, need to be, you know, we need to see a little more justification for that.
Dave?
I have nothing further. I mean, I agree with basically Greg was saying. I think if you, if you take a look at this architecturally and everything, you can make this work with the current architecture of the home and probably meet your requirements and needs that, that you, that you have. My biggest concern still would be the flooding, more so even than, even the architecture or the variance of what you're trying to do, but what you're doing with the neighbors, what you're doing with the water. So I, I think you have some homework to do, and I think that if you came back here with what a design that was kind of fitting and addressed some of the other issues, that it would be easier to, to look at these first two items and, and basically kind of indicate how you would address them, so.
So Mr. Sveska, you.
Hey, I just, I don't think I have an obligation to let the water drain through my current garage floor, which is cracked in several pieces right now. It's a pervious ground floor. That almost seems to be the point of mine, but the cisterns seem like a good idea.
So, but, I mean, I'll just, I'll just reiterate. Regardless of the height of his garage, the size garage that he's doing would require a grading plan to be reviewed and approved by the village engineer. And so he would make any comments or anything that, you know, suggestions that he would need to make for it to not cause a nuisance or additional drainage issues on his neighboring properties. So regardless of the height that he's asking, the village engineer would have final say on how the property is graded and how the water is handled, so that it is not negatively impacting his neighbors, per our building code. So regardless of the height, that would be addressed, period.
Can, can the scope of his comments include requiring some sort of drainage solution beyond grading? Because I, I, as I do whenever I can in situations like this, I like to go out to the property, and I hope you don't mind, I visited yesterday to try and better understand what was really going on down there. And it just seems like there's not a lot of room to work with. And so I think that it may require either a French drain or some type of other remediation beyond grading. So I was curious to know whether or not our staff would recommend something.
His engineer can include that in, in the plan and how they want to deal with it.
If I've got a garage built, then I would, you know, come back and redo the driveway as well.
Okay.
But the brick driveways, that can help with drainage, or?
Depending on how it's built, it could, yeah.
There are, there are materials, and, you know, Dave can speak to this with much more authoritative, more authoritative. There's impervious, there's impervious favor.
If I can't put up a new garage, I'm not going to put a new garage.
Okay. Commissioner Mateo, Jill, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Well, I agree that it doesn't appear to be a hardship or unique circumstance there, and I'm not inclined to recommend a variation to get a car off the driveway, especially a car that's a big park in the rear. And it's likely that the circumstance, which is not unique, the two sons driving cars, it's temporary, they might move, move out of bounds, and so then you're back having two cars. So I, again, I don't see there's any circumstance of hardship.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your comments. You know, as for mine, I, I, for the, I guess for the benefit of brevity, I echo many of the comments that, that have been shared already. I did go out to the property yesterday. I guess unlike some others regarding item three, the, the character of the locality, I, I did notice that to the east and to the west, that the garages back there were all similar in size to your own presently, and there's this very sort of horizontal line back there. And a concern that I would have is that by going up four feet, there would in fact be an impact on the character of what's going on in the backyard there. And so I, I could not more vigorously support the sentiment that Commissioner Gary communicated earlier about wanting to work with you, to try and make this work for you. And so to the extent that there's an opportunity to change some of the architecture, to make this work, you know, bring that down, and as we've said, if we can get it below 18 feet, then there wouldn't be a requirement for the variation if it can work in with the, the angle of the roof. And that said, I, I, I do share some of the comments that, that Commissioner Mateo shared with respect to the hardship. I don't, I don't know that it would qualify as a hardship to be, to have, to require parking a third car in the driveway, especially since in the back, and that's permitted. But that said, we, we do have a motion on the table. If there are any other, any other comments before we, before we vote on the motion to continue this until the next meeting, at which point we would like to receive some additional information to help us make a more informed vote. Hearing none, and Sonia, could you please call a vote?
All right. Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Randall?
Aye.
Commissioner Lesniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Cotera?
Yes.
All righty. So motion to continue this to the next meeting passes.
Okay. If there's no other comments, then we can bring the hearing to a close at 7:40. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Hearing's closed. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.